Okay, I will call to order this regular school board meeting of the Central Curry School District at 6 o'clock on January 21. The first thing is the flag.
My pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America. And to the whole public which stands one nation, and with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The mission of the Central Curry School District Number One in partnership with families and community is to ensure each and every student is prepared to succeed and contribute in a global society by engaging in a challenging personalized program of education excellence. So Agenda Item 2.0 is, or 2.1 is celebration from your celebrations and presentations. There's the proclamation of January 2021 as the board continues.
Be happy to take the floor here for a moment. And this is the time that we recognize the outstanding service of our volunteers being on the school board. And I have a proclamation that I'd like to share on behalf of employees and members of our community. Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do. Whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance. Whereas school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards. Whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement. Whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards. Whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels. Whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. And whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now therefore, we declare, hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Central Curry School District One School Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January 2021 to be School Board Recognition Month. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members in preparing today's students for tomorrow's growth. Congratulations. We have some certificates for each of you. So I'll provide them for you. And then if Director Wright was able to attend, then maybe we can take a group photo. Once he arrives, otherwise, we will wait. And of course, there is a little story for four out of the five of you. We had this exact same thing happen a year ago. One of you didn't come to the meeting. So behind this year's certificate is last year's because we never took the photo moment. So, so that's it. We have a couple pies for refreshments in case you sometime during the meeting or afterwards, feel free to enjoy the refreshments before the audience gets to them. Okay.
You all still have your home ones? Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 3. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda?
No, there is not.
Agenda Item 4 is approval of the consent agenda. And the minutes from December 16th meeting.
I move to present the confirm the consent agenda percentage. I lost words there for a second.
I'll second. From all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion. So when I say motion, motion. Okay, Agenda Item 5 is since then input on non-agenda items. Guests must state their names and address in limited three minutes. I don't believe we had any.
No.
Agenda Item 6 is district reports. We'll start with 6.1, financial reports. Guys have your financial reports there in front of you. They mailed to you, I believe, last night. Before we get started, were there any questions? Did anyone get a chance to look at them? Yeah? Your expenditure report, everything looks pretty much on target right now. You can see in a lot of the instruction, you're right around that 30% range in the general fund, which is good. We are having, I'm seeing some pretty limited spending right now so far this year. I'm assuming that is because of what's going on, obviously, in the district with COVID. Also with limited substitutes in the district. So we're seeing some reduced costs there. Your revenue report, the big one obviously to look at always is the taxes because that's where the majority of the revenue for general fund comes. And you can see that we have received so far through December anyway, over 2.9 million. We are on target actually to then exceed right now what we have budgeted by a little bit. It's where my estimates are right now. We had just a little under 3.2 budgeted. I think we're going to meet that and exceed it a little. Your purple sheet, which is your dispersment detail, which is your expenditures for the month. Nothing real exciting. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out. I think we talked about it before. Whenever you're seeing that Fund 243, you're seeing lots of disinfectants and wipes and gloves. And that's coming out of special money that came from the government specifically, that we set aside specifically for that. And then the other thing is anything in that you're seeing charged to account number that starts with a 291, that is that Riley Creek Student Body Account that's now being ran through the main system that we've got everything moved over now. So for example, if you go to the second to last page towards the bottom, you can see that we paid for a virtual reptile assembly. That, so now all of that detail is now showing up for you. Whereas before, you would not have seen it on here because it was being ran in a completely separate financial system. So now you're going to be seeing, every time you see 291, that's the Riley Creek account that's now been moved back in here and you will get to see that detail on these reports now. Cash report doing exactly what we thought. It starts going down a little bit at a time this time of year, pretty much until we hit June. And we have obviously a great decrease because that's when a lot of our employees get about 25% of their pay and benefits hit in June. We are on target for the fund balance to increase right now. We will see how that plays out towards, as we get closer to the end of the year. The thought process right now is we are going to try to save every penny that we can so that we can try to hold this, hold everything harmless basically in this next biennium. We're not quite sure, we don't know what our funding level is going to be from the legislature. We don't know what the student count is going to do, not only in our district, but statewide. We're seeing, we've seen huge swings in student counts. We're not sure exactly how that's going to play out. Won't even have an estimate from the state until later, I think in March will be our first one. So we're really sort of playing this close and being conservative right now with the expectation that we're really going to try to get through this next biennium with hopefully held harmless. If held. Two principal reports, Mr. Denny.
Hi, sorry, I missed your packet last week. Was up in Eugene all week for a one-day trip that turned into a five-day trip. My wife ended up having surgery, so it was successful on her spine. They shaved her bulge, the disc that was bulging. And now we're just in recovery process. So it's, it was a good week, stressful week, but good. Thank you, Tim and Josh, for kind of covering for me while I was gone. And my staff did a great job too, so no problems except for the rug peeling off, which Tim will explain later. Sad I wasn't here for that. But basically, I'll just go through this real quick. The holiday break was really awesome. It's kind of weird because that first week you feel really nice and the second week it's like, oh, I'm kind of ready to go back to school. So, but it was nice and the weather wasn't that great. But it's always good at that time of year to get some time off and spend with family and friends to some degree, even with the pandemic. Around a couple of grant awards that came through. Mr. Lencine got $1,000 from the Curry County Cultural Coalition. There's his picture right there with his check. And Michelle Hand was also got $1,000 from the Cuse-Curry Electric Cooperative. I believe she's the third staff member to get it this year. So Cuse-Curry has really helped the teachers out a lot this year. And I'm going to encourage even more to keep applying. If money's available, we need to get it here. You can see kind of what she's doing with that money too. Some upcoming events and lessons. I kind of sent an email out to my teachers since I was gone last week. I said, hey, what can I share with the board? So this is what someone sent me. We have our first field trip of the year next Wednesday. It was pretty weird that in January we're saying our first field trip of the year. He's going to be taking the eight graders out to Elephant Bar and they're going to do a restoration project. So the AM kids will go out most of the morning, then the PM kids will be out most of the afternoon on next Wednesday. We're going to keep our fingers crossed that the weather will cooperate. Fourth grade is working on research and they're working on researching life of Martin Luther King Jr., which is why we had the day off Monday. They're working on biographies. They also are very happy to hear Mr. Wilson and I, and he's been working with the tech team too. We bought all those Surface Go's. We bought keyboards for the middle school, but we didn't get keyboards for the three, four, five kids. And so they're having a real hard time because writing is real important for them to learn and to do. And to have a tablet, it's very difficult. And so we're actually putting a bit out and we're going to be getting some keyboards for those kids. That'll really help a lot because there's a lot of frustration when you're, it's like on your phone. You're trying to write an essay on your phone, it's really bad. So we're happy to have that happening. Third grade, we actually had some Surface Goes that came in and we spread them out amongst the K5 kids. And so each grade level got some and they're doing some sharing because we didn't quite have enough for everybody, but we did have a lot. And so that's been really good. The teachers are doing all kinds of stuff in third grade with that with Mrs. Barton and Mr. Alvin too. Hearing screening, we had screened 53 kids by the ESD audiologist with just the kindergarteners and any kids that were new to the district. And this is the first year this has ever happened, all kids that were tested passed. So usually we'll have one or two that don't pass, so we had everybody pass. That was kind of exciting to hear. Tina was in charge of the immunizations and the report went out to the Curry Public Health. And we have 27 students right now that are incomplete or insufficient. And Tina does an excellent job of gently reminding the parents and then a few weeks later bird dogging the parents and then eventually getting down to where you can't come to school if you don't get this shot taken care of. And a lot of it is seventh graders with their boosters. A lot of parents, they do the first shot and forget about the booster that has to come up. But rarely does a kid in the school, at the worst, they might miss a warning because the parents realize they can't come to school that day and they zip them over to North Bend Medical or somewhere, get the shot and then they're in school right away after that too. Semester conferences, we're working on that. And we're going to be doing virtual conferences. I'm sure Josh and Tim might share some of that with you. We actually found a way to use Microsoft Teams to, for parents to click on a link and then online schedule themselves. And that's been, for years now at Riley Creek, and that's part of having a new principal that'll be able to figure this stuff out, is we've, teachers pick a tentative date for the child's parents. It goes home, may or may not come back with a confirmation or this doesn't work. And the parent and the teachers pick a different date or time and it goes home. And it's just, it's, and you remember Crease, I'm here at Riley Creek too. And every year we do that and it's great. Then we try to match up siblings so the siblings, you know, so they have consecutive conferences too. But now, McKenzie really helped at the middle school, Daniel Strauss in the K5 wing and Josh did it over here in high school. Parents just click on a link and they pick the teacher and they pick exactly what time. And the teachers can actually block out time for lunch or time for dinner or time if they're going to meet with some parents face-to-face or via phone. And it's just perfect. And I, we actually had a meeting after school today. I was talking to the middle school teachers and we're trying to think of things that are going to stick around after this is all over, this mess, it's all this pandemic is over. And I believe that's one of the things that will definitely stick around because it's so much more efficient than what we used to do. And we're hoping that a lot of parents take advantage of that opportunity too. And then for parents without internet, we're going to block out some time so they can contact the teachers and have a phone conference or even if they need to come in face-to-face and a little social distance too for that. Some concerns, we still have some kids with internet connectivity that we're working on. Tech support is actually, we haven't had as many calls lately. So I don't know if kids are starting to figure out, parents are figuring out, but that's been good too. I know our IT has another person working with them now, James Martin. And so he's been on Riley Creek a lot, getting things going. He's super helpful and frees up Dan to do the big picture things and the systemic things too. So it's been nice to have him there. Consistency, we're still sticking with that. Another concern coming up that we're working on is the loss of the Hive Program. We were actually, all three of us were dealing with a parent today that's super concerned about that. And we're trying to figure out a way to make it work for the younger kids especially because the Ascend Program will work for 712, but it's not funded to work with the K6 kids. So we're trying to figure out how to make that work for the K6 kids and how we can do it with the staffing we have because that is a problem. And then a big thing that Mr. Fonkin, my counselor and I have been doing is we've been doing a lot of home visits and not really a visits, but home banging on doors and trying to find kids. We did some more today and we knew they were in the trailer, but they weren't answering. We went to dad's work and dad wasn't working. We went back and banged on the door some more nicely. And then actually slid an attendance sheet through the door, petted the cat. But that's, that is a problem for some of these kids. With the four kids that I was working with this week, 16 out of 21 days they've been absent. Another was 17 out of 21 and the two others were 14 out of 21 days. The last 20 days where they've missed that much school. And it's, and they're not, on Fridays when we have middle school, it's all online. 30-minute classes all online Friday morning, they're not even, they haven't even checked in once on those. So it's very difficult to get parents in the loop. And a lot of people are, I shouldn't say a lot of people, some people are saying that when this is over, we'll catch up. When this is over, we'll worry about it when it's over. And so that's something we're trying to get parents and kids to realize how important this is that every day you miss sets you further back. And we need to stay on these kids. And hopefully we'll be able to figure out a way to get them here. And we're trying to do the incentives and do that. But at some point, we're going to have to use the trinity paperwork and maybe even cite the parents. And I hate to do that, but sometimes that's the only way to get the attention of some people too because their kids need to be in school, it's their future. Thank you, that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions? And I do apologize for the last meeting. I don't know if you noticed, I was actually brushing my teeth and walking around the house with my laptop. Didn't that go four hours, four hours?
It was a long.
Yeah, I was like, wow.
It was really long. Nancy and I were here and there was a really bad rain, really bad.
Yeah, it was pretty bad too. So it was, so hopefully we'll be short tonight, we can make up for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Mr. Metzger? All right, I'll keep things fairly short because Tom said a lot of it already. But it's okay, the high school just kind of follows the same kind of concerns we have going on here. Hybrid instruction continues, students appreciate being at school. Attendance fluctuates due to illness, not COVID-related. However, as a whole, things are running quietly. I think the emphasis on health this year has really kind of changed student attendance where kids would traditionally kind of drag in sick. They might have one test, they have to finish, they might have one other thing. And then they end up getting five or six of their classmates sick. And then we have sort of a miniature epidemic in the school. That hasn't happened the same way this year. We have a lot of the, you know, one-off days and things like that, but we don't see the same level of frequent flying mass illness, which is kind of nice. Finals next week, regular school model, not a modification. Traditionally, we've done 90-minute or 75-minute class periods. We are not going to be doing that. We're going to be doing a regular model because transportation made it kind of challenging. Also in that week, we're going to be doing the PSAT, the preliminaries SATs and the ASVAB, which is the Military Aptitude Test. They're going to be offered on campus next week as well. Additional on-campus access, we're looking at a Hive-like physical setup in partnership with Ascend. Right now, tentatively, what we're talking about doing is using the mezzanine of the South Gym as our location that kids would go upstairs in their off-period time, meaning if they're an AM cohort kid, they'd be eligible to come into the PM cohort. Working with Carley, we've been able to identify that we can have about 10 kids per cohort. It's not a lot, but it's an improvement for some of those kids that otherwise would struggle to access. Couple of quick updates here, maintenance. So we were able to update with recent electric, the heating system in the metal shop, which was one of the things that was identified originally for the SFAF, the School Improvement Act. We decided to go ahead and take it on as is. We had to have them back out because new heaters plus old wiring systems, they don't always talk nicely to each other, but now things are running as intended. So we'll be back to finish a little more work at their next available time. Personnel, last time I told you that we had accepted the resignation of Eric Gibbs as our custodian. We have now actually added a second custodian as well. Todd Bean was hired as our evening custodian. Now we have a complete custodial team. We actually are seeing a lot more cleaning getting done, which is kind of nice as well as some of the maintenance projects that have been pushed to the back burner as new COVID requirements for cleaning and sanitation have come in. He's training this week and then we'll take him as the evening janitorial evening head custodian starting next week. And then the last one there, CTE revitalization grant. I got an email last week that there are still some funds available. This is the funding that was going to expand our health offerings to include some emergency services, medicine and some anatomy models as well as in the metal shop. Rebuild the casting program that we have, so buying a new factory and a sandmiller. One of the other things that I've asked is, I've asked for an additional $1,000 to provide goggle sanitizers for the CTE shop spaces. Seems a little strange that in the science lab, kids wear goggles, they put them in a cabinet, turn on a UV light that sanitizes them and then they walk away. Metal shop and wood shop, they're probably okay, you know? So that just seemed like an easy, low-hanging fruit thing that in a time where people are concerned about sanitation to go ahead and take care of. The goals, I leave these on here every time, it's the same way. Number one is social and emotional health for students. This has been a hard year for kids, starting off online, then returning to hybrid, then potentially having to return to online, the fear of that hanging over them in December and then coming back and we're still in hybrid. We have watched attendance fluctuate, but we've also watched grades go up and down and up and down and up and down very quickly. That's because when kids are here, they do well. When we're, when we are online more, they engage less. That's one of the challenges of all of this. These last two weeks of this term are really tough on kids because this week, if they had any incompletes outstanding from the 1920 school year, they have to have them completed by Friday or they become a no-pass and they will have to take a credit recovery course. And then next week is finals, this is a tough time, kids are stressed. But the thing that we continue to push really is, I wrote on here, staff conversations have emphasized positive outcomes rather than, positive outcomes and possibility rather than deficits, instead of looking at it and going, well, you're failing right now and you're going to fail. It's okay, right now you're not where you want to be. This is what we can do to still get you there, but you got to do it. We're going to help you, but we got to be real about it. So that's, that's been something that we're trying to maintain the focus on the outcome. The outcome is you want to get a grade, you want to get the credit and you want to graduate. Well, this is what you got to do and it's hard right now. Communication and accountability, I left this on here from last time. One of the things that I've wanted to really do was create a video breakdown of metrics as they apply to our school because there was a lot of conflicting information out there and things like that. And clarifying what information is used to make decisions regarding instruction. That was back in December when we were hearing that the school was going to shut down. However, that doesn't change that many of our parents still don't understand some of the rules that are in the Ready School Safe Learners. One of the things I heard is, well, why don't you just open a Hive and have 30 kids in there all day? Well, because Hive is an emergency daycare setting, it's played by different rules and the schools do in our SSL with, excuse me, Ready School Safe Learners. So just clarifying some of that and communicating that openly to the community in a more accessible format, then here's the ODE link where they only speak educationese. Seems like it would be worth our time.
Is there something, is there actual, is there a way to actually communicate any of this clearly? I mean, I don't even understand.
Well, again, if you, if you take the time to just actually break some of it down point by point, take it a little piece at a time, I think it becomes much more manageable. When you get the 90-page document that they drop on you and go, here's your two hours before the press gets it. Okay, let's try to play catch-up. That can feel a little daunting and overwhelming. So when you say to a parent, well, here's the rules and that really does feel daunting and overwhelming. But if we're to take a piece at a time and actually look at like, this week we're going to talk about metrics. What does it mean when they talk about metrics? These are the, this is the two-week snapshot, this is how it works. The next week, we talk about cohorts. What does it mean that it's a cohort? We keep talking about cohorts. I think we take it that way and break it into a series of things, it becomes more manageable. Because the last thing that I ever want to do is talk down to somebody, but I talk a lot and I can throw a lot of information at somebody and they go, oh, dear Lord, okay, no, I'm done. And they've tuned out. I mean, you guys are doing it to me right now. Activities, athletics, so fall sports begin in February. We still have more questions than answers on this one. It's really a weird time. OSAA, the Oregon School Athletics Association and Oregon Department of Education don't talk to each other necessarily all the time. And OSAA says, listen to what ODE says and ODE says, we don't do sports, that's OSAA. So right now we have more, again, more questions than answers. Practices will begin earlier for football. Traditionally, this allows more time, more contact. First contests for all sports begin in early March for fall sports. This is all tentative and kind of theoretical at this point. Right now, there are conversations about possibly moving football again, hoping for more time for contact, hoping for better weather, things like that. But right now it looks like soccer, volleyball and cross-country are currently on track to begin as a schedule. Some more on that as it develops. And then another major factor that's going to be looking at sports this year is grades. So traditionally, fall sports, they would have happened before the semester. So for example, every freshman walks in and almost we do grade checks, but there's no question, are they on track to graduate? Therefore, they can start semester one, they can do some sports. This year with the uncertainty of the beginning of the school year and things like that, their grades may not be where they want them to be. And we're going to have to really work with our athletes to make sure that they, they understand that the next two weeks are going to kind of make or break their seasons for the entire year because they're all happening after semester one. That's a tough spot to put our young athletes in, but they regularly rise the EK. So, any questions about the high school right now? Jeremy, really nice question about like trying to make it accessible because yeah, that's.
Well, I mean, good for you because.
It's a challenge.
It doesn't make any sense, so.
No, it doesn't always, but that's, that's, that's what makes it interesting. It's a challenge to try to produce these kind of materials.
I like your optimism.
Thank you. It doesn't come naturally. Generally very much a pessimist, but I try.
All right. Thank you, Miss, thank you. Okay, we're on to 6.3, the superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'll direct you to the light purple real quick. I apologize for a couple typos on my report. This is the enrollment report. We are at currently at 437, which is down three from a month ago. The good news however, is I received a report from Riley Creek this afternoon that there are more than 10. that there are more than ten students who are currently online, who are switching back to coming to school. Something we anticipated, doesn't change the overall number, but it is increasing the number of students that are coming on campus. And maybe that would be a good thing now to check the attached white sheet because one of the questions about now that our metrics are improving, and I'll talk about that in a moment, is as we get closer to being green all the time, what does that mean as far as students returning to full days of instruction? So one of the changes that did not occur was the thirty-five square feet per person rule. And that means we take the square footage of a classroom, take out desks, everything else, we measure the square footage divided by thirty-five. That says how many people can be in the room for instruction. And so on the white sheet then takes the data from last Friday, meaning the enrollment that we had at that time, not including the new ten I just talked about, and saying if this was our new day, could we return? Could we meet that requirement of thirty-five square feet per person? And you see here with little exception, we could. At the high school, it'd be a little easier to do. We move a couple of classes that are like in a couple over would be that you actually come into this space here. It's a little bit more of a challenge in the primary wing. It would probably have to result in the creation of a one-two blend in order to, because the K numbers are too high, the grade two are too high, but the two ones are low. So if that decision was made, that would be a consideration we would have to do. There's also a possibility of making a room change. As example with Ms. Miller, she's in one of the smaller rooms. We move her to a vacant classroom. We add five spots or five student spots into that. So this was more informational. This is not to say we're a hundred percent committing or say we're making a move at any time because there's a lot of other factors besides just how many people in a room. There's transportation, there's the redesign of our food service program. Where do kids eat? Which is more than likely the caf, not the cafeteria. It's mostly their classroom and then the whole time to re-clean and so again, and then the logistics of the buses. The transportation numbers aren't as significant as the classroom. Meaning you can have more kids on a bus, which I know doesn't make sense, but can we transport kids safely with the COVID requirements and then have them in school? So moving forward, we'll look at the enrollment after February first. One topic that might come out in a future metrics update is if you are a county that has been green for at least a month, that you might have a consideration to open in lieu of the thirty-five rule. But that's nothing that's been officially adopted yet.
Just a quick question, Tim.
Sure.
If our district here, would we, let's just say we intended to make these few changes here and open tomorrow.
Yes.
We have all the logistics under control by the ODE standards at this moment. Are we able to do that?
We, by making these changes.
Yeah.
And confirming that the logistics and transportation, food service could be addressed. Yes, we would be able to open up for kids to be there full day.
Yeah, how long has that been?
How long is, well, we haven't reached.
Been making multiple changes of this.
Right, so you bet. So as far as being green, actually I'll.
Ahead of you, where are you?
Well, that's okay, I'll, I'll, I'll jump to that. Actually, it is, it's an old business.
Okay.
Okay, so if you'll hold that question, I appreciate that. Under the rest of my report, just briefly, I've been selected to be a part of an accreditation team to visit Illinois Valley High School in Cave Junction. You might remember last time this year, this time last year, I visited Trinity Academy in Portland as a part of an accreditation process. A couple, both disappointments and celebrations, if you will, and announcing the retirements of Greg Brown and Deborah Dorn, our two special education teachers. Celebration because they are going to join the retirement club. Sadness because they're both very valuable staff members at our schools. And so we congratulate them. I've accepted their letters of resignation on your behalf. I've been with the license bargaining team inside an MOU in the last month regarding extra duty stipends. And it was related to the idea that all of the sports didn't occur this fall. And so if we don't have a sport, do you get paid or not? And so we've been able to come to an agreement on what compensation would be in case a sport is canceled. Or if they just, if they just practiced in the fall, but never had a competitive season, there would be some compensation. The, the new topic that has come up is, you might remember at our last board meeting, we passed a new policy about COVID leave. Well, it expired December thirty-first, so that policy has now been pulled. And because the COVID leave was a law and not a part of any contract language, the associations have to ask us to request a bargain. And so we are interested in doing that. I did receive that official notice yesterday. And so I'll be meeting with both associations to discuss the extension of what that COVID nineteen leave, looking similar to what the law was, and then making an agreement there. I'm pleased to report that sixty-one out of our eighty employees have taken advantage of getting vaccination this week. Appreciate the, the work with Curry Health Network to make that happen. As Mr. Denning alluded to, last Tuesday's storm alluded, did some significant damage to Riley Creek Middle School wing. This was the thirtieth year of the thirty-year roof and it's the old construct not contact, let me out here. Yeah, it's the kind with the grand. Yeah. Can, composition, thank you. And so if you haven't seen the pictures, I'll send them to you, but significant damage that on the topical tore all the gutters off and it did result in one classroom's about eight ceiling tiles coming down. Thankfully, it was on a day it was an open, a vacant room.
So when you say it was in your thirty of a thirty-year roof, is it covered?
Well, it is, it is covered under our insurance, so we will be making a claim. And so you might remember with the play shed, we had the damage back in around Thanksgiving time. The damages of replacing the composition roof would have been about seven thousand. Our insurance company agreed to give us thirty thousand and put a membrane roof on. We're going to ask a similar thing here. They may say no, but because it's a larger area. So we have companies bidding on that as we speak. And then two last items, I did have a community forum a week ago Thursday. Mr. Mesker, thank you for showing up. There was, there was one other person besides him. So we had a nice conversation about he is taking advantage of our online program. So it was a good conversation about the benefits of that and concerns around COVID in the community. So hopefully next time we will, in the means, since then, ODE has come out with the new toolkit that might help us be more creative in trying to get public input on that student investment account budget. And then finally, actually two finales. In orange here, just to remind Ms. Sorensen, Ms. Clarno. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Sorensen, Mr. McNair, Mr. Skinner. This is the time for you, your terms expire at the end of June. And so Nancy had completed a two-year term. Jeremy had completed the end of Luke's. And Scott said the end of his four. So anyway, if you're interested in reapplying, these are the deadlines. I had to call them to see, ask what the NST and the NLT was. Living in a world of acronyms, that was what I couldn't figure yet. But it's no sooner than, not later than. So February sixth to March eighteenth will be the candidate filing time for the May election. So I provide this information for your individual needs. And then I think the last thing I'd love to share at this time is I did put another copy of the, I think, this is under new business, I apologize. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I guess then we'll move on to agenda item seven point one. So back to you.
Back to me, okay. So this is an update from what was out in your package this weekend and that's the most recent one that came out yesterday. So now I'll address Scott's question. And so we're in the third week of improvement. And what I mean by improvement is meeting less positive cases and less positivity rates. And so as of yesterday, we're still in the yellow zone, but green for positivity, that goes up to five. We're at two point eight and green for cases is less than thirty. So if we had twenty-nine, we would be green, green. yesterday, you also might recall that there was a, January nineteenth was the big date on the circling, the date on the calendar for a big ODE announcement about changes in the Ready School Safe Learners and the metrics. Another reminder, since we last met in December, December twenty-third, the governor switched, made the decision to change the metrics from mandatory to advisory with the idea that to give local districts more autonomy in making decisions. It was a complete surprise to the administrator group. It was actually a complete surprise to the teacher union. Everyone was caught off-guard a bit. And so the result in that, however, after things have settled down is, and I'll send you the new chart, if you will. It really didn't impact us immediately because we were already in yellow and on the high part of yellow or the low part, depending on your perspective, right? But where it is going to impact people overall, the changes that were put in place yesterday increases how many kids, how it, that increases the numbers in the yellow and the orange and the red. So as an example, it's really going to help the large counties. And it's based primarily now with Washington and Colorado's numbers. So as an example, and I hope I get this right, I'll pick our neighbor to the north. Coos County is considered a large county because it's more than thirty thousand residents. It used to be you, cases for one hundred thousand. If you were in the yellow zone, it was up to a hundred. Now it's up to two hundred and fifty. So if you saw, yeah, and so, and then exponentially it changed in the orange zone as well. So now just to add another level, level of confusion, as Jeremy stated, besides the school metrics, we have the county risk metrics. And those are the ones that control restaurants, personal care, indoor athletics, all of those things. Those are based on the county risks. And if you might remember, for the last two weeks, we were red extreme. And now, last week, Curry County was the only county out of the whole state that improved their status to be moderate. So for at least one day in history, we're both yellow, but they have no correlation with each other. So when, again, confusing our public unintentionally is a challenge. The one takeaway I will take from yesterday's meeting, besides reaffirming that the Ready School Safe Learners guidance is not advisory. It is required. These are advisory, but you still need to meet all the requirements, if that makes sense. One hundred and sixty standards of requirements have to be met as you're making your decision. And of course, the other big overhang is if you choose, if you're in a red county, as an example, and you choose to open, knowing that there is potential risk, you may potentially lose your liability coverage from insurance. So that was the big, oh, so it's really not advisory, it's mandatory, so. So that is the, oh, so the, the one takeaway I want to share with you tonight from yesterday's meeting is that starting around March the first, schools will be provided at no cost self-tests, self-COVID tests that if you have a student or a staff member who is symptomatic, you may, with permission, if it's a child, give them the swab in fifteen, it's the rapid test and it will be, it will be provided for you to use. And then if it turns out to be positive, then you would say, okay, well, this says you're positive. You might want to go get the real one. We'll see how this all rolls out, if you will. If it says no, well, you might also want to consider getting the real one. So again, there's a little skepticism on how this is going to work. And I will tell you that the week before, the buzz on the street is we would be testing every staff and every student every week in a spiral type of thing. The guidance that came out yesterday said, oh no, just for people who have symptoms. So that is, Scott, did that try to answer your question? So honestly, the, the big thing that's going to impact us is the thirty-five square foot per person. If we can address those issues that are in yellow, then we are on our way to allowing that to happen. But what we don't want to have is something that would, like if we had a spike in cases or a spike in enrollment that would cause more classes to be overloaded. We either have to have a backup plan to say, okay, now we're going to move fifth grade to the music room where there's more capacity or something along those lines. Again, grade six twelve is pretty, pretty good. And that's, it's the K five, which ironically is the group of kids you want in school.
Do you know with the Riley Creek kids that you said were dropping online and coming in person? Are those going to be in areas of the school that are marginal?
They, they are. So again, I'll update this for you and then send it to you in a weekly report. I didn't have that information until this afternoon. So that's why I wanted to caveat that that was based on last December's.
Would we as a board for the Ready Safe Learners School, we have to update our plan as we've done in the past for full-on campus and then pass that?
Great point. So yes, blueprints are still required. We had, we had made a blueprint that you approved initially in August for the CBL and then when we switched to hybrid, that changed the plan. So it's my understanding that we don't have to change the plan to go to full group, to full onsite. Once you've made a determination that you're onsite, then both plans are a work.
What do you see the approach of our district in the coming weeks?
I think we'll continue to monitor the enrollment. It would be great if the metrics continue to improve. I would not foresee any change of model for at least a month. We might, might, might make it to spring break or it might be before. We, again, I want to make sure that we're fully prepared. I'm sorry to sound like a little politician. again, I want to make sure that we're fully prepared. I'm sorry to sound like a little politician, I don't mean to, but there's so many mitigating factors, like I said, that if, as an example, if we were to do this, bring people back on campus, we need to feed them if they're going to stay all day. So what's the impact on our current, and we could continue to have free lunches for everyone for the whole year, but we have that segment of our population that's the pre, from one to five-year-olds who are not in school. So we would have to figure out, so do we still, or can we deliver for them? Or do we create a system where they have to come on campus to get their meals? Or do we just say, we're no longer going to provide meals for them? So between that and then determining the capacities of the buses, those would be the two factors that we really need to search upon. But the end, the result, or the positive result of all of that would be we are, we're back to addressing some of the concerns that we have now of kids either with childcare for half-day or internet access and so on. So things almost go back to normal. But I, I don't want to do the boomerang effect of coming back for a week or two and then saying, oh, no, now we need to go back to hybrid because people need time to make those, those changes. And quite frankly, our teachers need time to make those adjustments between a half-day planning for two to three hours of instruction versus six that they would do once everyone goes in school, I think.
Can I ask a question about the high school? The white sheet in relation to the high school, which says for capacity for McGinnis and Bigelow's class, the two classes we need to move to the library, does that mean, that doesn't mean any additional staffing? It just means that the class would have to be held in a different space?
It just means that the space that we currently occupy, that we currently house all the other classes taught by that teacher is considered insufficient for 35 square feet.
So McGinnis is 19, and she has two classes that are 21.
Okay.
So either, oh, I've got two kids that are absent today, I can stay in my class, or I need to be prepared to move. Mr. Bigelow's astronomy class has 29, his class holds 18.
So the one, the one that's really the wild card is Pierce's class?
Yes.
Could that be moved to?
That could again be moved to the library or the music room or where there's.
As opposed to Riley Creek, there are spaces at the high school where these could work.
Yes. Yes. There, there is little more flexibility in space that we can, we can utilize. Riley Creek, because of the increased number of kids, the increased number of classes and individual preps and locations, for example, their library is used by multiple grade levels at any time because they have library time as one of their, their the previous district I was in called the specials. That, that means that space is not as regularly available, whereas at the high school, we have a relatively small number of students typically doing credit recovery in here. We could accommodate those students as well as a classroom.
We'll provide an update after the first of the month on what this looks like.
Yes. Did they talk at all about, you know, we were operating under a 50 limit cohort? Did they change that at all? Or, because I know that was one of the things that helped us by using the way we use the bathrooms.
So the cohort, it is, uh, has been one of the confusing things. So under the definition of cohorts now, well, sorry, when we were in C D L and we were bringing kids on campus for limited instruction, Lippi, you might remember Lippi, we could have no more than, kids could be in no more than two cohorts and a total of like 10 in a week. Now, when we're in the hybrid, kids can be a part, they can have no more than 100 contacts in a week. So I don't know if that helps. So as an example, the middle school has a total of 96 kids, so 48 of them are coming in the morning and 48 of them are coming in the afternoon. If by chance we wanted all of them to come in, we're still under that group of 100. So we, we would be okay. The high school is like 55 or 60. We couldn't combine the two cohorts currently. The middle school is, is the only one that we could combine cohort. So Tom, I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think so. But with, with the busing out of the cohort, that is a whole different.
Busing does not count as a cohort anymore. And just, this space between kids on a bus seems to be one that has some flexibility. Again, the idea that if you open the windows, there's cross ventilation and things like that. Okay?
Okay.
All right. That's my new business report. Old business report, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
You're welcome.
So we will move on to Agenda Item 8, New Business, 8.1, the Superintendent Search Process.
So in your packet, which I believe is apricot orange, these were the folks that submitted their applications to your consideration, and then there was a walk-on this evening from the community. You might remember, it attached there were all of the one-page applications from people. I, I will share with you as a summary that there's a wide variety of, of folks from being new, fairly new employees to seasoned employees. There's a good blend between the high school and Riley Creek. We had two community members and then an additional applicant tonight from the parent or from the community. You might recall that, so in total, we have three, eight, nine, 10, we have 15. The guidelines from O S B A were a group of 10 to 15.
Can you clarify, did that include school board members or?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I, I don't think so. So I think what you're, what you're looking at here is management of time and people. So I present these applications for you to consider and make those selections. All of them have committed to the two nights of training plus being a part of the, the interview process as you direct them to be.
We'll put it up to discussion. I
I support that.
There's 15 exactly, is that current?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Anybody that wants to serve. I guess I would add, I mean, if there's, I have no problem agreeing with what we're saying, as approving all 15, but if conflicts come where there's scheduling, I wouldn't adjust any of our schedules based on somebody not being able to attend would be the caveat. If you want to be a part of it, we welcome it, but not as a dictation of schedule.
I, my only question I would ask as far as the applicants who are a part of the school district, and I don't see anything here, but I'm just asking, are there subgroups within the staff that aren't represented on here?
There are no bus drivers. They tend to be their own campus, if you will. But we have classified representation from both schools. Mr. Metzger would be the lone administrator. And again, you're a little heavy on the primary with no intermediate. But there was, again, the opportunity to apply. So we don't want to discount them in that way. And again, at the high school, you have a blend of academic and C T E. So looking for someone who's going to promote career pathways and so on with Mr. Becker, that would be a, so I think you have a good balance here. I didn't count male and female. None of them applied. Yeah, that's true. So would, Crystal, do you know of anyone? Would you like to be on the, on the committee? Or would you come in, I'm sorry, Kayla, do you want to lead that discussion rather than me? As far as wanting to add confidential and, and, and management on this, besides Mr. Metzger?
Are there any thoughts? Like, everybody got an opportunity to?
I do too. I feel like we have people who have signed up.
That want to be on this.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess I would, I would advise there should be some consideration. I, I would think, I would recommend Crystal, if she was open to that again, because she is going to represent the, the business part of the job versus the, the academic part of the job, the leadership, instructional leadership versus district leadership. I can't commit to Crystal specifically. This is three, three nights out, you know, four or five nights out with interviews. So but I would recommend either tonight or prior to your session that there's the opportunity to add a management, additional management on here, especially under the terms that you, you're going to select all the other people as, as they have requested to be a part of the process. But again, that's your call.
Do we need a motion on this committee?
I think so. Yeah. I think I would, I would recommend that you make these appointments with a motion.
I'm trying to figure out how to phrase a motion. Do you have thoughts, Nancy?
You mean for, I make a motion to accept the 15 applicants listed for the Superintendent Search Screening Committee applications.
And did you want to add a caveat to that, that we would leave a position open or just take them as they are?
I think we could just make a motion to add someone.
A second motion, wait.
It seems like we could do that.
So it's a motion for the 15th, that's the motion right now. I'll second that.
Who made the motion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting these 15?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion.
And I will make a second motion then, which is that we go ahead and make the option for an additional position in the next two days, to be filled in the next two days or by the end of the day, Friday, if there's somebody from management that,
I guess, yeah, I was going to say, should be specific to management and not, yeah, I'd open it up.
Yeah. If there's somebody from management that is interested in serving, then why?
I'd second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on to 8.1.2 to confirm the salary range for the posting.
So as you recall, our O S B A consultant, Steve, said that there would need to be an action item one month later. In December, you approved the posting, but at a separate meeting, you would oppose the posting, which was already out, to, to approve, announce the rate, the salary range for your new superintendent. And what is list, I'm sorry, what is listed here is what is currently being advertised.
I move to confirm the salary range for the new superintendent to be from 105,000 to 120,000 for a full-time position.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, approved. We are moving on to Agenda Item 8.2 in New Business, the second reading of the revised policy.
And so highlighted in the yellow, and so the second reading, the things that are, this is a current policy we have, so it's being revised. The changes are in yellow. And so essentially, the changes from your current policy, it's added, and this is in relation to the, the new law, Senate Bill 155 that passed in the last legislative session, that besides district employees, contractors, agents, or volunteers are also a part of this. And the second part is, if the superintendent is the alleged perpetrator, then I've suggested that the South Coast E S D superintendent be the person who would do the investigation. If it's any other person, the superintendent has the responsibilities. And that is in the policy and in the accompanying administrative rules that go there, which is the process part of the policy.
I move to adopt policy J H F F F G B N A A and A R as presented. I was almost going to try it in military.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed. Okay, 8.3, first reading of proposed school calendar for 2021, 2022.
I was, I'm trying to figure out how we're going, how are we going to say that? Are we going to say 2021, 22? Are we going to say 2021, 2022? I'll leave that up to you guys. But, so in front of you, you have two proposals, one that says A, one says B. A is this year's calendar rolled back a day. So in that one, it starts school on September 7th, the day after Labor Day, and concludes on June 15th. Graduation would be on June 10th. This has the traditional Thanksgiving break, which has now become a tradition. It wasn't a tradition until a couple of years ago. The two weeks of winter break, the one week of spring break. The one item that makes this a little unique is the second week of November, where we have Veterans Day on the Thursday. So you can imagine having school for three days, have a holiday, and then come back to school for one day. So we've taken advantage of that and made those the parent-teacher conferences. So we would have conferences on all day Wednesday and Wednesday night. Everyone has a break on Thursday for the teachers who have worked 12-hour days on, on the 10th, and then resume conferences on the 12th. It does result in three consecutive days off for elementary and two for the high school, but it was the least impactful on instruction. The B calendar is the same, except it takes away the March 4 and the May 6 full-day end services. So it's adding two full instructional days and taking away two professional development days. This is something that has to be bargained. So I, I introduced these to the Licensed Labor Management last week. You might, those of you who have been here for a bit, we might remember that we've gone from having the majority of our days before school, kids arrive and after school, when kids leave, and then some like once a month, half-days. We've now, in the last two years, moved to a P D model that has an event every Friday afternoon. And so with all that said, the idea of having consistent professional development, we can do that with our current A proposal, but the B proposal recognizes that we have a lot of P D time. And this is an opportunity to add two more kid days rather than instructional days. So this is a first reading tonight, so it's a chance for you to discuss it amongst yourselves. It's also a time for the association, they, they've been given the opportunity to make comment on the calendar. And so I would bring back to the February meeting their comments about the calendar. But I, but the B might happen, might happen later. But confirming one of them, the A, if you will, at this time, would be a solid that, with the idea that B could. Yes. Questions?
Does calendar A, like, I know that there's a number of days that kids need to attend school. Does calendar A make it more difficult in the case of some kind of like, I don't know. Snow days or some kind of closure days, does it make it difficult to meet those?
Yes, so to clarify that real quick, this is the, starts as the employee calendar, actually the licensed employee calendar. And by contract, they have 190 days. So if you were to add all these, that that's where you see the 190 at the bottom for the totals. Students. Actually goes a little deeper and there are actually instructional hours. And so we're calculating hours and there are some things like this year, there was a change because of COVID that you, we could increase. Hours for parent-teacher conferences for. Professional development to start the year. This calendar presented for you is, provides about a three-day cushion for hours. Our elementary hours are always more. Than required. The high school is pretty tight, but like I said, it's about a three-day in case we do have a snow day, we're covered. So yeah, we're good on that. So this is not an action item tonight, but we're waiting back for adoption in February in case you have any questions. Comments.
I'll be interested to hear what the comments are from folks. I think having extra school days is always a.
Yeah.
Especially this coming school year, it's gonna be a need for more.
You agree.
We'll move on to eight point four, the 2021, 2022 budget calendar.
Well, I just asked.
So this is the, in yellow is the traditional calendar. It's been, I can't say how much tradition has been. Crystal will speak to the calendar and why it is what it is. Director Skinner has, has asked to have a conversation about it. So maybe appropriate for Crystal to.
Okay.
Speak to it as well, especially in this sense that we're in a legislative session year. And but she can further explain the process with that. So refer to her and then we can answer questions.
Okay. This is just the typical calendar that we've had with the exception, obviously, this last year we did back things up a week. Because of what was going on in the state at the time. So we actually had a later one. This last year, we were in the beginning of June, we had our first meeting. Typically, we meet towards the end of May. In this district, it tends to be about a two-hour meeting, give or take. It usually only takes one night. Because we are so small and we do have the benefit of being able to wait longer to see what the legislator is, legislature is going to do. Whereas other districts, you know, like Portland Public, they're, I'm sure they're right in the middle of budgeting right now. They probably barely start their year before they actually are already in the budget process for the next coming year. So we do have that as a benefit in the small school district. It's not unusual. A lot of the districts that are smaller, you know, April, May, they push it back and sometimes even more so in legislative years as well. Historically. I've seen the meetings go two nights. But that is a choice even on here for the budget committee to do so if they so choose. That is, that's completely up to the budget committee. We did at one point schedule two nights. That was back when we were laying off teachers, eliminating programs. It was, it was pretty, a pretty upsetting time in the school district. And we kept doing it for a couple of years after that. There was, there was no comp, there was almost no business whatsoever on the second night. So we went back to the traditional one night. Like I said, you'll see this is typical. I think it's Coquille, they're probably, I don't know, three, four times our size now. Give or take. Same thing, one night, couple hours. You know, we're, most of our funds go to our staffing. There shouldn't be a whole lot that comes out in a budget document that's real shocking to anyone because those conversations should be going on. You know, prior to that with the board about what your guys is, you know, what as far as programming, if we're going to have any changes. Sometimes there's some differences in some of the. Like the federal funds that are coming through, stuff like that. It's a pretty laid-back process. Is there any questions or concerns or?
Well, I, so when you say that there's an option for a second budget committee meeting, I guess, so. Can you run me through how that would work given, so if there was a budget committee meeting on. The 26th?
Typically, they come back the very next night is what they choose to do.
So is it advertised then as a? How is that advertised?
Advertised, because we're advertising it, we would have to back it up. When we did the two nights, they were scheduled. Like when we were having, we were cutting programs and stuff.
So that's what, I guess that's where my concern comes in.
Yeah.
Is that with this particular layout, I understand the rationale behind it, but my concern is, is that it actually makes a choice. It makes a choice before the meeting even happens for the budget committee because legally, there's not really a way to have a second meeting and I didn't notice it properly.
I will actually have to look that up in the document because I don't believe you have to notice the second meeting. Like you do the first meeting. I don't believe it has to go like this. I believe they can choose the time and place of their second meeting at the first meeting.
Okay.
So, but I will double check.
Okay.
Because like I said, I've never had it happen. They don't come back and want to.
That was really my main concern. I asked about the budget calendar for a couple of reasons. One. I did see how the calendar played out last year and it seemed to me, just by looking at it, that it was really, really tight. In the ability to really get input from, from a public budget committee and I'm not, there's, there's legal and there's also. The spirit of public participation that I think are important here. And then, so that was one of the reasons why I had this in my head, but then I also looked at what the state guidance was. On the OD website for, for school boards to do their budget process. And so that was the reason why I asked. I just wanted to at least have it clear right now before we get too far into the, into the year. As to what this is going to look like because. And I will say that we, it makes sense to me when you said that when there were layoffs, that there were two meetings. And actually, I suppose that in my own head, as we've gone through COVID, one of my concerns has been like, I have no idea what our finances are going to look like. And I don't want to be in a position where I have one meeting. To essentially make a choice. On really, really critical things. And so I guess I just want, I would ask that we. Not necessarily expect that we're going to have to have two meetings, but at least the calendar is set up in a way where we can, if we need it. That's, that's essentially what I, what I wanted to address.
I'll double check that and make sure on there. The other thing too is this is the calendar that, you know, that you can approve now. But if we start seeing something from March, April, and we start going, wow, things, we're going to come back to you with change.
Right.
Because we may end up needing.
Oh, absolutely. And I wasn't.
Which is why we did it, actually this last week in June. It was an extremely tight turnaround in timeline. And it was because of what was going on and the board wanted, you know, it moved out. So yeah, so normally we wouldn't be going in June.
Crystal, can you remind the board when, I'm trying to remember if they're, they get the document approximately a week or five days prior?
Typically, they get it on the night.
Night of.
And we go through page five, which is why we go through.
I do recall that part, right.
This last year, because of the way we were doing it, we actually put it out on the website.
Right.
A couple of days. Usually we're printing, I'm printing usually right up until like the day before the meeting when we have it scheduled like this. Because we are literally waiting for that last bit of information. So that we can go through the budget that's going to get us through and have the least chance of having to make significant changes to it, basically.
Well, I would just ask that we, that we, with, with the idea that. A, public transparency and trying to make sure that people feel like they've got an opportunity to really understand critical issues. That we build in enough flexibility to be in compliance with state budget law. And have a second meeting if that's helpful and if not, we don't. But I guess that's all I would ask.
Another thing, speaking like what Crystal said about last year too, with the opportunity that presents itself, getting it out to the public before the meeting so you have a chance to digest it and it's not. Tonight here, we look for the first time. It's hard to, maybe you have a question, it's nicer to review at your own leisure and then review the document in the course of the meeting, I believe.
We just need to make sure that we release it to you. There's rules about how it gets released. Yeah.
Alright, yeah, but I, that's probably, yeah. The idea that you have.
It was nice having it out.
Yeah.
On the website last, this last year. Plus a lot less printing.
I don't, I don't think that there's a need to make a motion to adopt that draft right now. I would actually prefer, if we could talk about it once again, maybe the next quarter. Maybe if you could clarify what the noticing is on that, that'd be helpful.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll move on to eight point five, the local service plan for South Coast Education Services District.
So this would be a two-sided document in yellow and essentially this is the annual notice. Of the services that our ESD provides for our 10 area districts. The ESD board has already approved this plan on the, it gets a bit, on the side that has the signature. You'll notice there's what's called tier one. Tier one is something that all districts get. And you can see primarily for us, we. They coordinate the homes, those families who do homeschool, that they're coordinated by the ESD, they provide our safe schools. Instructional videos. And they also provide the school improvement activities and hearing testing and evaluation. The second tier is what individual districts, from the pot of money that we get per student that flows through the ESD. Then we, we go through and select. In the tier two. So this document tonight is. Is confirming our approval of, of the way that money is distributed by the ESD. And it's been signed by their board chair for your consideration, Ms. Reeves.
I assume everything is the standard, standard on.
It is.
I move to approve the local service plan from South Coast ESD as presented.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion approved.
Teresa, if we can get Kaylee to sign that tonight, we'll send it off to ESD tomorrow.
Okay, we will move on to eight point six, the audit plan for corrective action.
It's in green and I'll defer to Crystal to explain this action item.
You probably haven't seen this before. I wasn't actually even expecting this. Normally, we send this in. First of all, we do get a comment in our audit every year for segregation of duties and it's because the limited number of staff people we have in the financial office. And you can read there. What it says, due to the limited number of available personnel, it's not always possible to accurately segregate certain incompatible duties that no one employee has access to. Physical assets and related accounting records are to all phases of a transaction. In the size of a school district, you're not going to be able to eliminate this. And this was the only significant deficiency that we had in the audit. What's different is normally I submit this, the board chair signs it, we send it in. When the auditor sent it this time, it actually is calling for. The plan of action to be adopted by the governing body at this meeting. So that's really the only. And so you can actually see the plan of action, the auditors had a recommendation. But the board and management remain diligent in monitoring the financial activities of the district and then you can see our plan of action basically saying that this is going to be an ongoing issue for us. But the board will continue to monitor financial activities. We will also be having the board chair come in and review my journal entries. And then superintendent, of course, the business manager meet regularly, obviously, to discuss financial activities. And that the timeframe is once again ongoing for this district. So we just need to submit this to the Secretary of State Audit Division.
The board member reviewing the journal entries, that's something we're beginning anew now?
Yes, we were actually planning on doing it last spring and then COVID hit and so. I didn't get to come in with my big book and get Andy with it, but. So when we had the, in August, when auditors came, they mentioned it again and said, you really need to start doing this. So I was actually hoping to see him tonight, but. So I have a book of journal entries. It's not, it's not like journal entries that happen through, you know, payroll process. It's actual journal entries that I'm going in and making, let's say, to balance financial transactions that happen automatically and are not being done in our system. So when the county collects our taxes for us, for example, they drop that money into our local government investment pool accounts. But none of that hits my financial system. That's all done outside of it. So I go in and do journal entries to book all of that revenue, to book that cash. And so it's those types of journal entries, ones that I'm, I'm making to account for financial transactions. So Andy will come in and he can either look at all of them, which he probably won't, he'll probably, he can choose a random month, however he wants to do it.
So is this a preface to, I mean, because there hasn't, I, my brain's mushed tonight, but has there been a report from the auditor for issued yet?
We just got the financial, we just got the financial report over break finalized. I just got it actually when I got back. And so after this, and the next question is going to be, do you want to have the auditors present, give a presentation to you?
And I do have that tened at least scheduled for your February meeting. They can do it briefly. They can do it, you know. Accountants, they could give you as much, the book you will see is this big, but we can get it down to 10 or 15 minutes. That would be great. As far as a presentation.
That's up to you guys.
Alright, well, I'll move to approve the corrective action for the 2019, 2020 audit as presented.
One second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we will move on to eight point seven, the superintendent evaluation timeline.
So in your packet, rather than do the whole thing, believe it or not, this is an abbreviated version, but I sent this to you also in your board packet over the weekend. So this is the process that the board has used to do my evaluation over the last two years. You might recall, there's a rubric where it's different categories and you kind of evaluate each standard. One page 10 as an example, the standard one is visionary leadership, standard two is policy and governance and so on. And then on each page is a rubric, ineffective, developing, effective, and accomplished. And those are then represented by one, two, three, or four, or 2.5, whatever. So the practice has been for each of you to review this document. Do your own evaluations, send those calculations and comments, if you will, to Andy as the chair. And then he prepares the document for, for you to consider for me. In the back pages, three pages. Is by evaluate, self-evaluation based on that rubric. So you'll see a page of numbers. And then the last two pages, then you might recall the three goals that you had, that you and I agreed upon to be evaluated. you and I agreed upon to be evaluated. One was around community engagement and longer age planning. So I've taken each one of those goals and sub-goals and then given you a comment as per where we are in, on January 20th. And with that, that would be something you may consider as you're completing your, your rubrics. Statutorily, superintendent needs to be evaluated by March the 15th. And so in the timeline that is suggested, you all, last year, I think you had a separate meeting where you met for a little bit. You can choose to do that again. I, I just left the calendar open because you're going to be really busy with superintendent search. So you may choose to do this in a different way. And then again, tentatively, February 24th, we would schedule an executive session, a, just, a executive session to review that evaluation with me. And then during the regular meeting, you would announce the results of my evaluation, which happens in an open session. The interesting thing about this on a timeline, and I'm not, I, I apologize that I didn't research the whole thing. Since I have retired, my evaluation is not pending me continuing employment. The, the deadline may not be as crucial, but on the other hand, I'd like to try to maintain the, the system as we do with our recommendations for license as well. So I hope in my comments will be beneficial for you. And again, if you have any questions or clarifications, let me know.
We need to confirm a date.
That would be something that you all can discuss as far as if you want to have another meeting or if you want to try to work individually and then send things to Andy and have another, like I said, I know you have been busy in February. So the, the dates right now are flexible. The only date you really need to remember is March 15th. As long as it's done before then. But your next general meeting, actually this might be a good time to remind you, our traditional third Wednesday of the month would be during the week. And I've put a reminder for you here, the, the search calendar, if you look for the week of February 16 through 19, that's when you have your interviews scheduled. That would be also the, the third Wednesday of the month. And so in talking with Andy about the idea of having, still having, I think it would be beneficial to have, still have a February meeting. So I'm suggesting February 24th, the week after, we can make it a light agenda. Unfortunately, it's not one of those times of year, like sometimes we've skipped a November meeting or a December meeting because there's not a lot of business, but you're going to have business this time. And so I'm suggesting that February 24th would be the next time you would all meet publicly. So if that helps you with your calendar, if, if this is sufficient, that you have a packet that's sufficient, or if you want to make any other arrangements, let me know how I can facilitate them.
I have very little thought.
I think that schedule seems reasonable. I'm okay with it.
I think because we're so busy, we might just end up emailing each other back and forth for evaluation.
And that's what we kind of gave everything last, you know, submitted everything to come up with.
That's what I recall.
And then we met.
There was a, yeah, we didn't have.
So another way to look at it is you might meet an executive session and finalize it.
Correct.
And then give me the final draft at a later time. Right. Crystal, does it take board action to change the calendar or is it just announced ahead of time?
The budget meeting?
I'm sorry, the February meeting, changing it from the third Wednesday to the fourth? Is that, does that take a motion or just?
I think they can do it back in consensus.
And then you do.
We're still meeting at the regular time. It's just a meeting, it's not a general business meeting. It's a specific meeting for.
So you're meeting the week of the 16th?
Right.
For your interview. So in that sense, that is a special meeting.
Okay.
And then your regular business meeting would be, is proposed to be a week later.
Right.
And then you do your agenda ahead and that's your public notice.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll move that meeting then to the 24th.
That sounds good to me. Okay, agenda item nine is citizen input on agenda items. We will move on. So we're on to 10, individual board comments.
Is there anybody on Zoom that want, or is it?
Well, we've advertised that if they're in Zoom that they don't, if they are to make comments, it's before 5:30.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It's up to you however, if you want.
Individual board comments. I just want to say for anybody who's still on Zoom or who's going to watch this later, thank you to the people who volunteered to be on this screening committee. We appreciate you. Thank you.
I heard some good comments the other day about, even though it's been kind of, it was a mixed comment of the comprehensive distance learning and the hybrid. A gentleman has a couple of sons that go to two different schools and he was comparing, he was able to compare, kind of, in a sense, I guess, apples to apples and felt like our district was doing a good job, even though it kind of feels, you never know where you are, you're at in the spectrum, I guess is a good way to look at it. I think the COVID stuff sometimes makes me, I just, when you, throughout these months, we've heard stories and I've talked to coaches and people where there are kids struggling. You know, just being out of the, the structure of everyday class and having the mentors and the leaders and the sports and all the things that go into it. I mean, it's difficult having these conversations because sometimes I feel like there's kids that are drowning or, or floundering in the water. And as adults, we're reading the instructions of how to make a life ring work. I mean, it just gets lost in the context of what's best for kids. And so I hope, as my own personal opinion, we move towards getting back into school and trying to get back to some sort of structure and not be focused on what hurdles we have to jump necessarily, but have the focus be on how we can help the kids and then work out the details. I know it doesn't work like that in the government world because the government world doesn't make things easy, but it's just, you hear the good stuff, I'm happy, but I hope that's our, our goal.
I'm speechless tonight, so.
I'm, I think it's, it's, I'm grateful for the opportunity for the staff to have the choice to get the COVID vaccine and that so many participated. I hope that benefits getting everyone back to school again.
Okay, agenda item 11 is key dates. So our next school board meeting, regular meeting is February 24th at 6:00 PM here in the library, I'm guessing. And, and we have a special board meeting on February 4th and 9th for the superintendent selection committee training and to be announced for the superintendent candidate interviews the week of February 16 through 19. That, we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:39.